Good evening, welcome to the April 2nd Selectmen's Meeting. Again, we had some posted on our agenda, some executive sessions already went over. At this time, I'll ask Selectman Clark to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you mind, sir?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of March 19th.
So moved.
Second. Motion made in second, is there any edits to the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. At this time, we offer the opportunity for new public business, that is, if anybody wants to bring to the Board business that's not on the agenda this evening, the Selectmen would like to hear your thoughts and ideas and concerns. So is there any new public business there? Mr. Bradstreet, please. Always welcome, sir.
My question is, Danvers is a well-run town, buildings are well-kept, people like Danvers, they like to see what we're doing. My question is, Town Hall is the building that a lot of money was spent on years back to make it more than presentable. When I come to work, or not work, but when I come to meetings, there's the obelisk out there, it's for veterans. Unfortunately, the base of the obelisk, where there is some carvings, is obscured by manicured bushes. Memorial Day's coming up, the end of next month, would it be possible for those bushes to be either trimmed back or removed so that the monument, the whole of it, is visible for those people who feel it was important to have it put there, and for those of us today who would like to see that it's still important?
I'll ask the Town Manager, should you look into it and have the grounds people look at that? Thank you. Is there any other, Mr. Duggan, please, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Matthew Duggan, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 1. I had a question about the financing for the Smith School. Back in January, prior to Town, Special Town Meeting, you know, we had a discussion about the time period for the finance, and we talked about the 30-year bond and then a 20-year bond. And the 20-year bond, I think, required a, some type of debt exclusion that would require approval from the voters. Has the Board made a decision about the final financing plan, about how that's going to be the timeframe or the length of time that the bond is going to exist for the Smith School?
The Board conducts all its business in open business, and we have not had any discussion, other than the fact, at the time, we said we were pursuing it in the budget as a 30-year bond. That has not changed, we have not had further discussion on that, that's not to say we may not in the future, but at this time, as stated before, this current, the current budget being presented to the Selectmen and onto FinCon and onto the Town Meeting is based on a 30-year bond.
Right. And the reason I mention is, I think that, you know, the taxpayers are the ones that should have a say in that, maybe not the final decision, but I think it behooves us to give the taxpayers at the annual Town Election to have a say in whether it should be 30-year or 20-year, because we know that the 30-year stretches the initial 30, 30 and a half million dollars, stretches it out to almost 60 million, so almost half of it is in interest. So, much like a home mortgage, it's advantageous to pay it off in a shorter period of time. So, I guess that's just my point, that I think, I know the Board has the final say, but I think really, I think it is advantageous to have the taxpayers have a say in that as well.
So, just to remind you of the mechanics of it, this Board would have to, if we went to, if we wanted to go to 20-year, as we discussed before, it required debt exclusion. In order to get to a debt exclusion vote, 80 percent of this Board has to decide, two-thirds, I think it was two-thirds of this Board, two-thirds of this Board would have to agree that it should go to a referendum vote, that is, the only way a debt exclusion could happen. So, the first step would be for this Board to discuss whether we feel it's an appropriate thing to pursue 20 years, or a debt exclusion, as it were, and then, then indeed, it would be the will of the voters to make that decision. And we have, we have upcoming finance discussions and meetings after FinCon finishes its work and Town Meeting finishes its work, but the budget's going through this year, after this election, being presented with a budget that represents a 30-year bond, after which we always have the latitude to consider and discuss our financial position as a Town.
Yeah, I understand that. So, from having the Board decide, you know, I understand it's a politically dangerous move to say that you want to have a debt exclusion in a town that's never had, never approved something like that, so for you to go out on the limb, kind of unnecessarily, I think, is, and that's kind of why I'm bringing this up, is that you kind of have to be brave to put it in front of the voters, I think. But I think that they deserve to have the opportunity or to have a say in it, they're the ones that are going to be paying this, they're going to see a significant increase in their tax bills, as they do every quarter, when they get their bills, they see an increase, you know, year over year, so. I think, I would urge you to think, think about doing that, I think, I think it would, I think it would show that you're brave, I think.
Matt, did you take out papers to run for Selectmen?
Too late.
I have not, no. All right, well, good luck to you, thank you. Is there any other new business items not currently on the agenda for this evening? If not, we'll move to our next agenda item. Thank you. The next agenda item, a public hearing will be held in accordance to Chapter 82A to lay out the following private roads. Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. The Board will vote to accept a gift in accordance to MGL Chapter 44, Paragraph 53A. Mr. Town Manager?
Thanks, Chairman, I see some friendly faces in the back of the room, you received a memorandum this evening from Ellen Graham, Chair of the Preservation Commission, and the project that they're here to talk about tonight goes way, way back, but in recent years, they've put in some hard work to bring it to a conclusion, and they're here tonight to talk about the outcome of that effort. So, without stealing any more of their thunder, I'd like to let Ellen introduce her guests and talk a little bit about the gifts being offered tonight.
Thank you.
I was hoping you were going to take care of it, Steve. Hi, I'm Ellen Graham, Chairman of the Preservation Commission, and I have Kathy Simon here, who's also on the Preservation Commission, and I will say, this project definitely stalled, the State Hospital, we have, I don't know where, Avalon and Bradley, are they here tonight?
I believe so.
How are you?
Do you want me to take it back? I'm sorry, Ellen, I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
That's quite all right, I'm just teasing. I will say that it stalled, and honestly, for the hard work for Kathy Simon, who worked with Susan Fletcher and Dick Trask, to put this memorial back together and reach out to Avalon and Bradley to help us to pay for the memorial for the State Hospital, as you all know, State Hospital, that happened a long time ago, right Ted? They had nice, beautiful marble things for information about the State Hospital, they've been up there for, how long now?
Empty tablets for...
Empty tablets, waiting for information. So Kathy and Dick Trask put together beautiful narratives and photographs concerning the State Hospital, and with our partners here, Avalon and Bradley, they're going to help us celebrate that and get that finished. Would you like to say hello?
I'll jump back in for a second, introduce her guest.
That would be great.
Yes, I'm sorry, so Kerry Crowley from Harbor Group Management, which I believe is part of Bradley, and Josh Rumel, the property manager on the Hill, and the project Ellen is referencing, there were two marble or stone obelisks, monuments that were prepared, something like 20 years ago, and a committee was formed to determine what sort of information should be on those, and my, I believe it was one of the most contentious committees ever formed in Danvers, they never came to any sort of consensus or agreement, and 17 and a half years later, Kathy stepped in, brought the parties back together, they agreed on content, and Avalon was not able to be here tonight, but both parties agreed to offer a $5,000 gift to cover the expense to complete the monuments and have them installed up on the Hill. So, I'd offer Kerry or Josh or both an opportunity to talk a little bit more, if you'd like, I don't mean to put you on the spot either.
This would be great.
Okay, excellent.
Great.
We're excited to have them finished and that we could contribute to the project.
Do you have a timeline when, you know, when this might be installed and presented?
I'm going to let Kathy talk, since she's the...
Okay. Hi.
Hi.
Kathy Simon, Preservation Commission. So, at this point, we've just learned that we received $5,000 from both Avalon and Bradley. Thank you very much for that. And that was based upon some pricing that we had done for these plaques, that we're going to be fixing to the granite pedestals that are at the State Hospital. We haven't done anything about it, I haven't contacted the vendor yet, which is called Centec Metal Products, that company, we haven't contacted them yet to let them know that they were the winning bid. I had gone out and sought for bids from different vendors and looked at their products and reviewed it with Richard Trask, who has done this over the years, to determine what kind of metals would work on, with the weather, and et cetera, et cetera. And so, we went with Centec Metal Products, and we haven't called them yet, because I wasn't sure the money was in. Now that the money is in, I have a call-in to Richard to say, let's work together and let's get this thing done. So, we're excited about it. We've got the text, the photos, everything's been reviewed and sent to our friends at Bradley and Avalon, we've worked together as a team remotely, and now, our hope is that we get this done by September.
Great.
September, and...
Good luck to you.
And thank you, and hopefully, we'll have a, an event at the time, and I know the folks from Bradley want to have like a cake sale, and, and we're going to need some money to keep those pedestals, because they're brick, and they're going to need some work because they've sat stagnant for so long, there's bee hives in them, there's going to be some work that we need to do, and they're already scheduled. It's amazing how we're going to get this done. So, we're hoping September, guard, thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. Questions from the Board members, Mr. Clark, sir?
No questions, just everything on that Hill takes a long time. I was on the Committee for 12 years, and we were looking for alternative uses for the building, so it goes back a long time, back to the early 90s.
Selectman Mills?
Thank you very much for your, and where's Ellen? Thanks for persisting with this.
Selectman Langley?
No, thank you, really appreciate it.
I, too, congratulate you on perseverance, and thank you for your efforts. There's no other questions, I'll entertain a motion. Mrs. Spiliars, Representative Spiliars, please.
I cannot resist, just a bearer of all good news. No, I sat on that Committee with Selectman Clark all those years, but more importantly, and to dovetail what has been said today, ever since we've opened the State Hospital to housing and new development, one part of that legislation was the care and maintenance of the cemeteries. And unlike this monument, those have not gone unattended, regardless of who's managed that property, between the Department of Mental Health and the homes, every year, we have a ceremony, and every year I've attended, since we've opened the facility, every single year, if you get a chance, take a ride up there, more and more of the cemetery is cleared, more and more of the markings are laid there, and each and every year, there's progress made, so that we know, over the 150-odd years of who was buried there, we know each year more and more of the former residents of Danvers State and who are still there. So, I commend them for that, and that's gone on, basically unnoticed, except for this one ceremony we hold once a year. Thank you.
Thank you for your kind words and for your support of the projects. Would any members of the Board like to offer a motion?
I make a motion, we accept the gifts in accordance to General Laws, Chapter 44, Paragraph 40, 53A.
And appropriate letters.
And appropriate letters to be sent to Bradley and Avalon.
Motion made in second. Any more discussion on the motion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you again to all parties for pushing this through. We appreciate it, thank you, and look forward to the grand opening when you have it, ribbon cutting, whatever we're going to call it.
We'll come up with something.
We'll come up with something. All right. Now, item four, a public hearing will be held in accordance with Chapter 82, to lay out the following private roads in anticipation of a vote of their acceptance as a public way at the May 2019 Annual Town Meeting. Ardmore Drive, Arthur Street, Bayview Avenue, Central Avenue, and Laurel Street. Welcome. Usually, it's Rick, but we're very happy you're here.
Good, thank you very much.
It's been a while since Rick retired, so...
Yeah, but didn't he do the last one as a way, on the way out? Did you do the last one?
I did the last one, yep, yep.
Okay.
He did such a good job, it felt, yeah.
It was smooth, it was so smooth.
To be up here. Thank you, Chairman and Board Selectmen, I'm here tonight, obviously, to, for the public hearing, to accept the five streets that you mentioned, Ardmore Drive, Arthur Street, Bayview Avenue, Central Avenue, and Laurel Street. As part of the process under Mass General Law, Chapter 82, required to have a public hearing, where people can make any comments or have any questions, concerns regarding the layout, we then, I would then ask you, if the Selectmen would, once the public hearing closes, that they accept the layout as presented, to bring it towards Town Meeting this year. Just a little background on the program itself, we've done this since 2000, we're going into our 18th year, but accepting streets, we've accepted over 110 streets to date, which is roughly our 21 miles of roadway that we've been eligible for Chapter 90 funding. So, it's been a good, a good program for us to keep continuing to do for eligible state funding to repair our roads and sidewalks for these streets. Some of these streets have already, are still, actually have been provided Town Services since they've been in, been accepted, been a private way, so I thought it was only right that we actually move these streets forward to being accepted by the Town.
I think one of the common questions that come up is, at this cadence, when are we going to catch up? How many years? If we do five or six a year, how close?
We could do another 10 or 15 years, there's quite a few streets out there.
Okay.
If Rick were here, I think part, his fault, but comment would have been that there may be some streets in town that we're never able to accept, absent an act of Congress, given the...
There will be, there are some that we will, will have to maintain as private ways.
That's right. Okay. And for the Board members, I'm sure we know, because we've all been through this a lot, what does accepting as a private way mean to the taxpayer, to the public? That we now plow the roads, and now maintain the roads, we now...
Well, we'll provide, you know, we're providing services for water, sewer, stormwater, and utility infrastructure improvements that happen on the street, the Town will maintain or repair, will provide plowing services, trash services for the, and any other roadway repairs that are required for the street.
Great.
And importantly, they are added to our Chapter 90 mileage as well, so they factor into our state aid.
Board members, yes?
My question is, what's in it for the Town, and I don't mean to put it on you, Steve, because you're carrying out a program that's been going for several years, I'm thinking of Central Avenue, I've been going up and down Central Avenue for 60 years, and the fact that it's not a public street, I find curious, but I don't know anything about Central Avenue that hasn't been totally maintained as a Town Street. In other words, all this formality, what's in it for us? Is it a Chapter 90 issue?
Yes, the Chapter 90 is a big piece of it, for us to get funding from the State to maintain our roadways.
Okay.
Anything else that there's the advantage to the Town of doing this action?
And we're also, we're already providing a lot of these services to these streets that are on this list right now, yes, so...
And they're billing them, and they're paying.
And then, the residents have been paying for the services.
I'm not saying it's a bad thing, I'm just wondering, why do we do it?
Unlike, unlike a condo association, which is a more recent, you know, creation where you have private association fees to cover some of these costs, a lot of these roads predate modern zoning, and so you don't have an association with funding sources, so there's a, I think there's a common good case to be made, but it is in our best interest to have them up to Town Standard, and as the Town Engineer said, then we do end up receiving funding from the State to maintain them moving forward.
Okay. I'm not saying it's a bad thing, I'm just saying, Central Avenue, I've just been going on it for years and years and years, I always thought of Public Street, Private Street, whatever, the rubbish barrels are out there.
There's quite a few of them out there that I think we've all thought they were already previously accepted, but haven't formally been accepted.
Selectman Langley, was any questions?
I'm all set.
Mr. Clark?
Being almost as old as David, I've gone on some of these streets quite a while also, and I can't believe that Arthur and Laurel Street weren't accepted. I got a question, though, is Crane and Hampshire unaccepted also, those are the other four streets, they were all built in 1870s.
They are accepted, Lawrence, they've been accepted.
This is absurd, I mean, an absurd oversight from 100 years ago, almost, in these cases, because Central, Arthur, and Laurel are all, they've all been around longer than Dave and I have been around. I wonder how Ardmore got in there, that's one of the newer ones, that was under a subdivision plan.
That was one...
Oh, there you are.
Yeah, he's going to speak next.
That is one that I had to do some research on, to make sure it wasn't an oversight previously, and after the research, and I even chucked my predecessor, we did confirm that it was never fully formally accepted by the Town.
Still a cop fashion.
Representatives Spiliars to speak. I know you came here for the subject, so, welcome you, sir.
Thank you very much, for the record, my name is Ted Spiliars, I happen to be a resident involved tonight, but your state representative, and I'm here as the state representative. Just to answer your questions, Ardmore Drive, Ardmore Road Drive, I forget now, I've been living there for 35, 37 years, my understanding is that the neighborhood was built in piecemeal, Bradley Road, which is the road that breaks off of 62, was built first, then the developer decided to take one of those lots and build Ardmore, Ardmore up that way. So, I never knew till I got my letter that I didn't live on a public way, because when I first moved in, just like this Town does in so many ways, they paved the road, paved the sidewalks, they plowed it, so my understanding is, I lived on a public way. I'm here partly for that, but I'm really here to commend the Town and the history of doing this. Believe it or not, Mr. Mills, this is a very contentious issue across the Commonwealth. Many communities choose not to pave the roads, not to plow the roads, it ends up in stalemate, it ends up in the Legislature, and it ends up in my Committee. And what generally happens is, when this comes down to this area, the city or Town, mostly Towns, all Towns actually, they want the neighborhoods to create associations, and they come to the Legislature, and they tell folks, just as if they were moving into a condo, that they were now going to live in an association. And quite frankly, I've stopped those bills for a number of years, because I just simply don't think it's fair. Now, I didn't really have a good response for them as a solution, except for the fact that I said, at some point, especially a road like Ardmore, someone approved it. A guy just didn't come along and build dozens of homes or hundreds of homes and put them there and have non-conforming roads, somebody approved this. So therefore, the poor person that bought a house and was told, hey, you know what, we kind of plow, I don't think that burden should fall on that person, and I think this Town does the right public policy thing, does the right thing in every way, and will be rewarded through Chapter 90 funds, and be treated just like everyone else, because in reality, these are roads. It would be foolish for us to think of downtown roads in Danvers as not being part of our community. They set the, they set the tenor and the feeling of our community, that's what we are, is what the downtown roads and the suburban, is what we've built up, and to deny that or to say it's wrong or to put added burdens on our constituents and our neighbors is wrong. And I'm here to commend the Town, and I didn't expect an intro like that, Mr. Mills, but I really appreciate it, because this is one of the most contentious things. As a matter of fact, I've never looked at the case law, but these have ended up in court, they've ended up in Superior Court, they've ended up in appellate courts, and I'm just glad that we have smoothly addressed these issues and have accepted them as our community, and it's not the case in some of the others. So, I just really wanted to come by and tell you how thrilled I was to know about this, to be able to tell my colleagues across the Commonwealth that there is a way to address this, it's a simple way, and that it's a way that we don't initially create a more financial burden on our taxpayers. So, thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, is there any other member of the Public hearing to speak? Mr. Duggan, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Matthew Duggan, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 1. My property abuts Bayview Avenue, so how will this acceptance impact me? There's no sidewalk on that side of my yard, and I also have some neighbors who have built, one built a retain wall right up to the curb of Bayview, and another one fenced right up to the curb, so are these properties impacted by the acceptance as a public way, or is it just kind of business as usual, no discernible changes if Town Meeting accepts?
Well, I've got an engineer.
There's a status quo for a lot of these streets, depending on, I'm not sure exactly what street you're...
Chase and Bayview.
Chase and Bayview, yeah, there's no change, there won't be any changes.
All right, thank you. And then, just one other comment about the going forward, so new streets, I assume that they'll meet the criteria by the Engineering Division or the Department, that there must be some standard about what streets in the future should look like, and I mentioned that with an example in mind, and that's over in Beaverbrook Woods, where I think Engineering Department defined this new road to be 50 feet wide, with some other kind of attributes, but the developer said they don't want anything wider than 42 feet, and so somehow, the Town said, okay, that's fine, there must be some type of hardship. So, is there a baseline for streets, like...
It's very simple, it's, any new street that's constructed now is regulated by our subdivision control law, which was accepted in 1979, so at a minimum for development like Beaverbrook that's coming in, they'd have to have a 50-foot right-of-way for a roadway. If they're proposing something less than that, then they would have to go into a homeowners' association for that street, wouldn't accept it as a public way.
And so, and so that's, that's a problem, right? So, the planning department for the Town has accepted the developer's proposal of 42-foot wide width for the public road, because they didn't want a private way with the plowing and the maintaining of it, so how do you get the exception? If the, if the, one department says 50 feet, no matter what, and then another department can override that and say it could be 40 feet, or whatever the developer says it that they want, so that, to me, is kind of like a special consideration.
Not knowing the particulars of this project, anything that is non-conforming goes before the CBA. the CBA for discussion about why they should break the zoning laws. This is zoning law, and I can't speak to that particular project, but we have other projects in the past who have non-conforming streets, get waivers, and remain non-conforming streets, such as Salem Village, Old Salem Village. We don't pick up trash there, we don't do the maintenance plowing there, we don't pave that road. It's a subdivision, it's a subdivision road, and we will not accept those kind of roads, as you've heard from the town engineer, as a public way, and then assume responsibility for something that's not conforming.
Yeah. I would, I would trust the, the knowledge of the engineering department to do what's right. If they say it should be at a certain width, then that, then that should be that way, unless there's some type of public hearing that, where the developer can, can prove otherwise.
I'm gonna suggest that there probably wasn't without the knowledge of that project.
Mr. Chairman, so Mr. Duggan's describing a project that was before the planning board, and as Mr. King indicated, the, the subdivision control law that was passed in 1979 is the governing document for that, within, you know, before the planning board. So there have been multiple public hearings on this project before the planning board.
Is there any other members of the public who'd like to speak to the layout of the roads? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the Chapter 82 layout as presented.
Motion made. Any seconds?
We don't have to read the prepared document?
Um, oh, yes, we do have, I'm sorry.
I move that the Board of Selectmen lay out the following roadways as public ways in the town of Danvers, and recommend to Town Meeting that the following roadways be accepted as public ways in the town of Danvers. Ardmore Drive, Arthur Street, Bayview Avenue, Central Avenue, Laurel Street, said layouts be more particularly described in the respective layout description to be executed by the Board of Selectmen.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any more discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you very much, thank you for your hard work.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Steve.
Item number five, the Board will consider an application of the Danvers Senior Center, 25 Stone Street, Paula Corcoran manager, for one day wine and malt beverage license on Saturday, May 4th, excuse me, from 11:00 to 2:00 p.m. for the annual volunteer recognition event at that location. Kathy, are you speaking to this?
Yes, I am. The senior center has submitted an application for their annual volunteer recognition luncheon, and it has all the appropriate approvals and a TIP certification.
Board members, Selectman Langless?
Nope, I think it's great.
Mr. Clark?
No questions.
Selectman Mills?
No questions, thank you.
And I have no questions either.
I move that we accept the application as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. Agenda item number six, the Board is in receipt of an application from Danvers Cares. Lyle Harrod, event coordinator for Light of the Night, Light the Night Purple, in returning community walk on, in return, returning community walk on Wednesday, May 15th, 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., beginning and ending at the library rotary pavilion. Welcome.
Welcome, good evening. I'm Nancy Hathaway, Chair of Danvers Cares, also with East Boston Savings Bank, a sponsor as well of the event. I'm here, Lyle Harrod, interim director of Danvers Cares, and one of our sponsors, RCA Mark. And we're asking the town's continued support in our community for the fourth annual Light the Night Purple Walk to be held on Wednesday, May 15th at 6:30 on the grounds of the PBD Institute Library, and we're just looking for community support for this event. So, and the message is to promote hope for families struggling with addiction, and raise awareness of opiate and other substance use disorders. So we're just looking for that support. And I'm just gonna announce our sponsors, and then have Lyle and Mark speak. So we have our gold sponsor, Recovery Centers of America, silver sponsors, East Boston Savings Bank, North Shore Bank, Leahy Health Behavioral Services. Our bronze sponsors are the Maple Street Church, Essex County District Attorney's Office, Massachusetts Opiate Prevention Collaborative, St. John's Prep, First Ipsos Bank, and the Kiwanis Club of Danvers. And leave it with Lyle for one moment.
Good morning, my name is Mark Donio, I'm a treatment advocate for Recovery Centers of America, and we're a detox and CSS unit that's at the old Hunt Hospital on Lindell Street. And last year, we all came as a facility down to the, the library, and we had a great time, so this year, you know, we're the gold sponsor, and it was a good time, we'll look forward to it again this year.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone, Lyle Harrod, interim director, nice to see you all. So, yeah, I think everyone's pretty familiar with the event at this point. This is the Light the Night Purple Opiate Awareness Walk. We're really happy to have all the sponsors that we do this year, the community support is really strong. In addition, we have some grant funding from the, one of our Mass Opiate Prevention Collaborative grants as well, so I want to recognize them. That, so the event, we'd like you all to attend, of course, and then also, Kathy, we've, we've gone through a few things about the banner, and so we have approval to hang the banner the week before the event, May 6th through 10th. And also, I believe you all discussed the bows in the, on the February meeting, is that correct?
Yep.
So we have approval to, as we did last year, hang large purple bows made by some wonderful volunteer seniors over at the senior center to hang them on the light posts downtown. And as we did last year, too, we'll also be giving bows to local downtown businesses, along with posters, and asking for their support on the day of the event. So we'll have purple lapel ribbons, you all have probably seen them in the years past. I'd like to ask if we're able to give purple lapel ribbons, as we did last year, to the different various town buildings, and ask for the support of town employees on the day of the event as well.
You can work with the town manager about the town properties, and I don't think that'll be an issue. Is there any discussion from the board members? I'll start with Selectman Clark.
No questions.
Selectman Mills?
Well, I have a comment to say how wonderful this is. I notice in the, in the, in the pamphlet, among the goals of the program in there is to erase the stigma associated with addiction. I think this is terribly important. I'm getting, I don't know, I guess I'm older than Clark, and I have seen attitudes, fortunately, change dramatically, especially in the last 10 or 15 years. Youngsters overdosing in the paper, very often, the, the family will say so-and-so had a long struggle with addiction, and it's clear to me that that kind of publicity helps other parents and other family members who still have the stigma of someone addicted or struggling in the family. So I just say that what you're doing seems to me very, very important, and I will support this. And I can't walk too well anymore, but I can come down and grab a shirt if I can get to be the first 150, extra large, if you have one.
You got it.
Thank you. Selectman Langless?
Thank you, RCA, beautiful fit, and thank you for what you do. Lyle, you're just amazing, you're having a really good time for yourself, and this is a wonderful thing, and I, and I hope I'll be able to make it this year, so thank you.
Thank you for your coordination, thank to all the sponsors, including RCA, who happens to be a neighbor of mine, and, and looking forward to the event again this year, so. I'll entertain a motion on the application. Mr. Town Manager, do you have anything else?
I'm gonna make a comment on a different subject before Nancy runs away, but you should finish your item and...
So on this agenda item, can I accept a motion?
I move that we accept the application as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Mr. Town Manager, you had...
Yeah, East Boston Savings Bank is a sponsor of this event, and if Dan Bennett were here, he'd, he'd offer the comment that I'm about to make, but I want to recognize Nancy Hathaway and East Boston for stepping up on a different item this spring. We have a plastic bag ban coming on June 1st of this year. She and her bank have volunteered to donate several thousand reusable bags. There's gonna be a press release going out, probably within the next day or so. We're hoping that the example East Boston has set will inspire some of our other corporate neighbors to follow suit and offer to donate bags. The goal will be to distribute those in a couple of locations this spring. One at our Zero Waste Day, we'd like to hand out the donated bags to residents so that they can use them shopping around town, and also on Election Day, as an added incentive to come out and vote. There will be a table outside of the polling area where folks who come to vote can pick up some bags from some of the, from some of the donors. So we just, thank you for that. And we've also been working to collect gently-used bags at several locations, including Town Hall, that have been washed and donated to the food pantry, so that the food given out to customers there can be put in reusable bags to be used throughout the community. So it's a very generous gift that the bank has offered to the town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on. Agenda item number seven, the public hearing will be held on the application of Motor Works, Doing Business as Motor Works, 197 Newbury Street, Unit A, Danvers, John DeRusso owner, for a Class II dealer's license at that location, is this someone to speak to that? Welcome.
Thank you, Chairman, and the Board. My name's John DeRusso, I currently own Motor Works, located on 197 Newbury Street. I'm just here to exercise the approval from the planning board of the Class II dealer license. We basically modify and repair cars, trucks, motorcycles, snowmobiles, and things like that. The use of the license will be to sell those vehicles as well.
All paperwork's in order?
Paperwork's in order, yes.
Thank you. Selectman Langless, I think you're next in the rotation.
No. Do we have a lot of snowmobile repairs in Danvers?
It's not specifically in Danvers, but in Massachusetts, yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
Long as they don't get on my rail trail, you have my support.
Yeah, no, everyone rides in New Hampshire and Maine, but they live around here.
Good luck.
I'm sorry, I meant to ask the clerk, how many cars does this provide for?
They got approval for 15 parking spaces, as shown on the plan.
Thank you. Selectman Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and congratulations and good luck with your business. I'm glad to see that, I think you fulfilled the, that new building that was built up there on Route 1, a commercial building, to fill it out. And I'm also very happy to see that you're gonna be associated with an old, almost abandoned street, the Ingasol Street, and comes out there on Route 1 at that location, and it's been kind of not used for much of anything for a long time. I do wish you luck up there, in Miracle Mile North, just north of Route 114, but it's a good location for car dealership, and good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Selectman Mills?
Thank you. John?
Yes.
I should know, I know that street pretty well, but I'm looking at the, the Plan 197 Newbury Street. What do I look for if I'm up on Route 1 looking for that property?
All right, so you're gonna pass, you know, where U-Haul is coming northbound?
Could you speak up, please?
You're gonna come past U-Haul on the northbound side?
Okay.
Okay, so you pass U-Haul, then it's, used to be Honda North right there, that's now the auction. Then you have M&amp;H Engineering is the next building. That street is where Ingasol Street is, right on, to the left of M&amp;H Engineering. So it used to go across before 95 came in, and the building's right there, right next to what used to be Strike 1, and now it's called the Sports Complex. So it's in between the Sports Complex and M&amp;H Engineering. There's a vacant piece of property.
Does it set down in?
Yeah, it's set down in a little bit.
And your parking spaces are gonna be behind, behind the building?
Well, it's, yeah, it's, well, 'cause what we call the back and what you call the front, you know, one's Route 1, and then one's 95, so it's gonna be mostly 95.
David, you'd remember there used to be a diner there.
I remember everything about that street, and the village green did not plan to have 95 go in. They, they planned to be greatly successful on just Route 1. I remember 95 and everything about it, so best of luck to you there. Thanks for indulging me.
Thank you.
Did I get everybody? I can't remember. Did you comment?
I, I started.
Okay. I have no comments other than good luck. This is a public hearing, is there any member, Mr. Duggan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Matthew Duggan, Town Meeting Member, Precinct One. Just, just a quick question on this, on this address, this, this sounds like the doggy daycare places. Is this, are you like a co-tenant with the doggy daycare? Were there, there's a couple of, I think at your last meeting, didn't you just, you had a couple of licensees for daycare?
Yeah. It's tender upon...
Yeah. Okay, I was just curious, it's, just wondering if those were compatible businesses, I guess.
I'm not sure why that would be incompatible.
Okay, well, maybe you could have dogs working.
Is there any other comments under the public hearing? Anybody else?
I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made in second to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'll entertain a motion on the application.
Make a motion, we accept the application of Motor Works for a second-class dealership at 197 Newbury Street as presented.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, and good luck.
Thank you for all your time.
Thank you.
Next item, the public hearing will be held in accordance with Section 2 of the Rules and Orders Governing Private Livery Service within the town of Danvers, on the application of JND Transportation, Inc., Doing Business as JND Transportation, Joseph Nioki, owner, five-dire court, Danvers, to license one seven-passenger vehicle to travel on all streets in the town of Danvers to provide transportation on a reservation basis only. Welcome, I hope I got your name right?
Oh, yes, you did.
Thank you.
And silent. Good evening, everyone. We're here on behalf of JND Transportation. We're here to seek approval to offer services in Danvers under one vehicle, it's a seven-passenger, that will be here in that court.
Is the passenger vehicle a van or a limousine?
It's a van.
A van?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Anything else you want to offer to the Board? I'll turn it over to the Board.
And actually, this idea, he's the one who, he was, it was like about three months ago, he was driving and he saw like a, a transportation for children, one van, like, the driver was kind of driving rough, and he called me and he was telling me like, because he's a father, I am a father today, I mean...
Congratulations.
Yeah. So he told me like, you know, he, I mean, he would, he wouldn't feel like safe and trusting like his children, like, you know, being transported and such, like, because in our generation, we're kind of glued like to phones, and actually like driving, or like, driving one, texting and like on the phone, it kind of like, it's dangerous, especially when transporting children. So I told him, hey, instead of complaining, how about you become a solution, we become a solution. I challenged him, we start a company that we can lay like up those principles of safety that other parents, like they can entrust and feel secure when they entrust us with their, their children, when like, with our company, like, that other parents, they will entrust us with our children, because our company will be based on like, on secure and safety, that's our number one, like, those are the principles we wanna lay with this company. And that's why we, we started with one van, like, because we are starting small, and we hopefully in the future, we're gonna grow and make it a company.
Well, good luck to you.
Thank you.
Selectman Clark?
I have no questions, good luck to you. I'm sure there's a great need for something like this in our town.
Thank you.
Selectman Mills?
Thank you. Is this to pick up youngsters' children mostly, or, I mean, how many hours a day are you going to run this van? And who is your, who are your, what's your customer base?
Our customer base, we're gonna start with Danvers schools, offer like a... Fixed route. Fixed route transportation.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
So for the most part, it will be a fixed route, so we'll be, we're looking to just transport kids, children in general, like even special needs children, who like, like, transporting them from home to school, school to home.
Great.
Okay, well, best of luck.
Thank you.
Selectman Langless?
I'm, I'm confused, so I guess I'm getting all my licenses a little mixed up. So this was something that I remember when CNA Taxi was in, and isn't that a special type of license to be able to, aren't you hired by the school to do that? I, I thought, I remember going through this with CNA when, shouldn't probably be saying it, but the, who, who contracts this? I thought the school had to, I thought they had to have special license, insurance, I mean, what is this, do this, I thought this was like a limo, like that brings you to the airport and back, am I wrong?
Well, I think the license is for livery service.
Right.
If they wish to work with the schools, they'd have to contact the schools and inform them to their rules and regulations.
But also, we have submitted those documents, that before the, here, we've, we submitted all the requirements in terms of the insurance, the thing that you need for registration. So we have that in place and we've submitted that.
For livery service.
For livery service.
Livery service.
This in no way means that they can advertise that they are, and I'm sorry, I just, we've been through this before. So that they can advertise that they are special needs transportation, I just, I, this is deja vu for me. We went through this with a safety issue some, many years ago. I remember this being in front of the Board of Selectment. I don't even think I was a selectman. So I just want to make it clear to you that, that's, unless police and school department and town manager or clerk say that that's okay, I would hope that you would check your advertising. That's all. I just, I'm having a little problem here and...
But the advertisement was done through here, right?
For livery service.
Yes, for livery service.
For livery service.
And that's...
Everything you do with the schools, you need to go through the school department.
True.
Yep.
So that's all. I just want, I don't want you to get in trouble. I want you to do it right. So just...
I know, yeah.
Just dart your eyes over here before you do any of that kind of advertising. That's all.
That's right.
But are you gonna transport to the airport in a van? Because I've got a very large family and we're always in trouble. But good luck.
Thank you.
I have no questions. I, the application for livery service is in, in, all correct. This is a public hearing. Is there any member of the public who'd like to speak to the application? Hearing done?
I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And now I'll entertain a motion on the application.
I move that we move the application as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, before, I would just suggest Keith Taverna is the Assistant Superintendent for Administration for Finance and Personnel. He also oversees transportation. So we have contact information for the applicant and we can ensure that they've, that they get connected with Keith Taverna to have any, make sure that everyone's on the same page in terms of school transportation.
Thank you.
Make sure it's done right.
Thank you.
Item number nine. The Board will consider application of Linda Turcot, event coordinator, to hold a town-wide yard sale in the Elm Street parking lot on Saturday, May 4th, eight o'clock a.m. to two o'clock p.m. Rain date to be May 11th, 2019. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. As you said, my name is Linda Turcot and I reside at 5 Whitfield Road. I'm a Realtor with Keller Williams Realty. And in addition to being a full-time Realtor, I do a lot of charity work and I like to get involved in the community. So we did this back in October with your permission and I believe it was pretty successful other than the fact we had to have used the rain date, which was on Sunday. And I think we probably would have had more people if we had done it on Saturday. So that's why the rain date this year is the following Saturday. So as the coordinator of the event, I will make sure to obtain liability insurance per the request of the town clerk. I've already contacted my insurance company and that's in process. Again, set up online registration for the permitting process and I will provide the list to the town clerk's office the Thursday prior to the event so they can do the permits and I will make sure they get distributed. We'll also ensure that nothing is left behind at the location, the central location, provide trash barrels for any trash for that day. And at the request of Captain Level of the Danvers Police Department, I will provide a temporary barrier to prevent cars from driving through the lot during the sale. This is also going to coordinate with the Danvers Zero Waste Day. It wasn't planned that way, but I think it'll be great. There'll be a lot of people out that day. So I thank you for your consideration.
All right. Questions? Selectman Clark?
I have no questions. I think it's a great idea. Good luck, Linda.
Thank you.
Selectman Mills?
Hi, Linda. Is this an income generating thing?
No, I'm just sponsoring it.
People bring their toasters, sell their toasters and...
People, people just sell their household items that they need to get rid of instead of putting them in the trash.
That sounds interesting. Okay, I'll see you there.
Yard sale is a big business. There are a lot of people that they scour, you know, Craigslist and every weekend they're out doing the yard sailing, so.
Then they sell it on eBay the next weekend.
Probably.
Okay.
Selectman Myers?
No, thank you, Linda, for all you do.
No, and I, Linda worked on a townwide one last year and this is kind of a culmination, bringing it all to one central location.
Well, they, we do have residents that, that do hold them at their own, their own home. But, you know, for folks that are unable to do that, they live in an apartment or a condo, this is just a great way for them to set up and sell their goods, their household goods.
And it's either the clerk or the town manager. I'm sure the lot will be somehow blocked from people parking there or cleared of vehicles. I'm thinking of one very big tow truck that's usually in the lot.
Yes. It was there last year.
PBW's on board. That's all I need to hear. All right.
I just want to also thank Kathy Ellsworth. She's been so helpful to me. I email her and she's been guiding me through the process. So I really appreciate your help.
All right. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion on this agenda item.
I move that we close. Oh, we don't have to.
Don't have to.
I move that we accept the application as presented.
Second.
All, seconded. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Good luck to you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Agenda item number 10. Public hearing will be held on the application of Interstate Management Company, LLC, Doing Business Doubletree North Shore, Boston, 50 Village Drive, Kate Brill Daily, Manager, for change of manager on the all-alcoholic beverages license at that location. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Alvin Napoli. I represent Interstate Management Company. I was in front of this board a couple of months ago. I had another manager which we appointed. Unfortunately, for personal reasons, he had to leave. And we brought Kate Brill Daily back, who had worked up there for a number of years, was working interstate out in Springfield with the Marriott there. She's well versed with the site in this location and we have an application before you. And she's here to answer any questions, to have her appointed as manager of record.
Thank you very much. I'll start with Selectman Mills. Sir?
Thank you. Kate, how big is your operation up there? I mean, you have banquet hall, dining room?
Twenty thousand square feet of banquet space.
What's that?
Twenty thousand square feet of banquet space and a bar and two restaurants, and then the water park attached to it.
Wow. I've had friends go in the water park. And I'm sure I've been to it. How many people can you seat at a banquet?
At a banquet, up to eight hundred.
Okay, yeah.
Depending, because we're half Middleton, half Danvers. So we have the line in the middle. We share, share the wealth between both towns.
Do you have to get a license from?
Both towns.
Both towns?
So when we do something, we're doing an event this week that we have parking lot, a tent in the parking lot on the Middleton side. We will have fire from both Danvers and Middleton. When we call for Middleton in the water park, Danvers comes up and helps. So we partner very well together.
It sounds like a challenge for you.
So I spent six years at the water park as the director of the water park. I also helped the local elections here back six years ago for the town. So when they asked me to come back, it was sort of like coming back home again. So sitting here in this meeting, I actually wasn't being disrespectful on my phone, but I was actually taking notes because the recycle bag thing is something that we'd like to partner with in the community. And then the Purple Night, like, so I'm looking to bring back all the community efforts we've been doing, having been here before. And so it was, it was just enlightening to be back in the town again and not, I mean, I've been in Springfield for eighteen months, so, which is a different opportunity.
You have a great lawyer too. I trained him.
So you've trained all the lawyers in town and Bill's taught all the people in town between the two of you. All right, Selectman Myers?
No, but you know, when I looked out the audience, I thought I saw Ted Speliotis and Joan Lovely out there. My first thing was, what's going on? I missed something. I missed the memo. Welcome back.
Thank you.
And the, two months ago when you were here, we heard that they were going to renovate the ballroom. And so can we get a little update on that?
So there is a renovation in progress for a lot of the property. Still waiting on ownership to finish the sort of interior design piece, but the carpet's been ordered and the vinyl's been ordered. And we also have the sixty cabana rooms that are under renovation as well. So we're going through an entire renovation. It's probably gonna take a little bit longer than we expected just because our ownership is very diligent in making sure the GCs are local and that we're doing the right thing and, you know, really taking the time to do it right. The last renovation I was here for was 2012, was when we became a Doubletree. So it's sort of exciting to be back again for another renovation. And I look forward to like spending the, hopefully the last few years of my career here in this town.
Well, all we ask is that you serve all the meals on the Danvers side. Much appreciated.
Of course.
Thank you and great success to you.
Thank you.
Selectman Clark?
No questions, thank you. And keep up the good work up there. It's a great, a great venue to have something happen at or go to.
Thank you.
Thank you. I ask a couple of standard questions of all applicants. I see your tip certification is attached and I usually ask how long you're gonna work at the event. Your application has fifty-plus hours, so I'm satisfied that my regular questions have already been answered in the application. I have no other questions. This is a public hearing. Is there any member of the public who'd like to ask, to speak to this application?
I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I move that we accept the application as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Good luck.
Thank you and good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you. Someone like Kate makes it easy in my job. But I, but I would like to say just a couple of things. Kathy has made my job very easily too. She's a wonderful person to work with and a pleasure. And it's always nice seeing my old boss, Mr. Mills. He was the first attorney that I ever worked with. I was in law school and he taught me well. I was a selectman in my town for a number of years.
That was at least ten years ago.
It was a few years ago. And I was sitting here and thinking about some of the times we had together as I was a young student. And I remember going someplace, I don't know where we going, Mr. Mills, you were driving. And I turned to you and I asked you about what is an arraignment? And I didn't know that we were gonna have an hour-long dissertation going back to England history, English history as to what...
Thank you. Just say how wonderful.
It was. It was wonderful. I still remember it today. And so it's always nice to see you and thank you again for everything. Thank you.
Item, agenda item 11. The public hearing will be held to consider whether the license to sell alcoholic beverages held by Danvers Tacos, Inc., Doing Business as Mexicali Grill, Aurelia Lepe Maldona, Manager, 29 Andover Street, should be suspended, revoked, or limited in any way. We'll ask the town manager to, do we start with the chief?
I would start with the chief.
I didn't know if you wanted to predicate that. Chief, would you speak to the, to the issue you brought before the board last time?
Sure, thank you. As you know, the last meeting brought forth a potential liquor serving violation to the board. And I recommended to the board to bring the ownership forward for further discussion. The ownership of Mexicali Grill on 114 in Danvers. Specifically, I stated the violation was 204 CMR 2.05, Section 2, permitting illegality on the license premise to wit MGL Chapter 138, Section 69, sale or delivery of an alcoholic beverage to an intoxicated person. This stemmed from a January 17th, 2019 incident, motor vehicle accident, which occurred at 11:23 p.m. on the on-ramp to I-95 South from 114 westbound. The operator of that car had just left Mexicali Restaurant, had driven down the road a little over a mile, was unable to negotiate the turn to get onto the ramp, drove over the embankment, down into a swamp. Officers arrived. Various things took place. They determined that she was intoxicated. They placed her under arrest for driving under the influence of liquor. She made statements that she had been at this establishment and that's where she had been coming from. Further investigation from Sergeant Mike Bosley, who responded to the, the restaurant on January 18th and explained the situation to, I believe, Ms. Maldonado, who was the manager and owner, explained the situation. She acknowledged that that party was at the restaurant the evening before. She was very, very cooperative, provided all the information to Sergeant Bosley, which included a slip, a sales slip for two margarita, Patron margaritas. She also provided, or also what at the time was provided, was an additional slip for some potential alcohol that had been served to a table next door that, with a group of friends that had been with this woman earlier. It is unknown whether or not any of that alcohol from the second table was consumed by this, this party. Essentially, those are the facts.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate your diligence. We welcome the representatives to go to the podium. This is, before, I'm sorry, Chief, I just want to make sure, are there any members, do the members have any questions of the chief at this time?
No, I want to hear from you.
Thank you. Please go to the podium, introduce yourself. We are televised on a local camera. So if you can speak into the mic, it would be helpful. And as you know, we are the licensing authority in the town of Danvers. This is in a court of law and we're interested in understanding your, your response to the chief's, to the chief's report and the situation and what you might have to say about it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Nicholas Felici. I represent Danvers Tacos Incorporated, who's Doing Business of Mexicali Grill. With me tonight is Augustin Robles, who was the server that evening, as well is the manager of record, Ms. Aurelia Maldonado, and the owner of Mexicali Grill, Mr. Francisco Lepe, who has also owned, which you might be familiar with, the Acapulco's Restaurant in Beverly at Covington Center for the last seventeen years before they opened up the Danvers location under Mexicali Grill. Just initially, Mr. Chairman, I just have some materials regarding the tip certification and acknowledgements for both the owner, manager, and the bartender, if, if...
Sure.
As well as the receipt, the question I gave yourselves with.
Thank you.
And as well as the receipt specifically that the chief had mentioned regarding the sale of the two margaritas to this particular patron that night.
Yep.
For your, for your perusal.
And I should have predicated this with, I understand it's an ongoing court case. We're not naming the person this evening. This isn't about that person particularly. It pertains to it, but we want to be careful to maintain the, the, the chief's ability and the police department's ability to pursue this without having her named.
Certainly.
Thank you.
And if it pleased the board, my clients are here obviously to answer any questions or to give a narrative of what transpired that evening, specifically from the server's point of view. But I think in the interest of time, I would certainly like to give the board the overview. And if you'd like specific questions directed to Mr. Robles as the server or to Ms. Maldonado as the manager, I'd be glad to do it. But by way of short history, this is obviously something that we take very seriously. And I'm sure the board does too. And that's why the chief has brought this matter before the board. My clients have, as I said, a seventeen-year history in Beverly of impeccable service, tips training, and specifically, a very, very good reputation in the Beverly Restaurant. These same people worked in the Beverly Restaurant for years and have come over to the Danvers location when it opened in December. Mr. Lepe, like I said, has been in this, in that business for seventeen years without any incidents in Beverly. And unfortunately, this incident occurred only a few months after they had opened the Danvers Restaurant. But it's important to, to note from the beginning that Mr. Robles, the server, was employed in the Beverly Store for several years. Every single one of these employees, before they even begin to become an employee of Danvers Tacos or in the prior restaurant in Beverly, Acapulco's, has to go through full tip certification. And you'll see in the package that it, not only is he tip certified, but Mr. Robles has received a couple of other achievement awards for his service of alcohol and his responsibility and knowledge of the tips tenants, if you will, of how to make sure that alcohol is served reasonably and responsibly. And that's something that these folks have taken a great deal of pride in. It's a family organization. Francisco and Aurelia are brother and sister and been at this for many, many years. So they take this very seriously. What happened here was, interestingly enough, this particular patron used to be a regular patron at the Beverly Restaurant. And Mr. Robles served her every week with her two daughters, sons, and her husband faithfully. They were faithful restaurant goers at Beverly, knows her well, knows the family. She's a family person, came in with her husband and two children regularly. Never had an issue with this lady. She then went back, went to work at the Outback just down the street for the Mexicali... She then went back, went to work at the Outback just down the street from the Mexicali Grill. I'm sure you're familiar with it over on 114. And she's a regular patron that comes in after her shift at the Outback. So, on this particular evening, January 17, she came in after her shift was over at the Outback, and she indicated to Mr. Robles that her husband had taken the kids to the game. They went into town for, I think, Celtics or Bruins game. And she said she was going to be out for a few hours. She just got off her shift and was out with a couple of friends and had her own tab with Mr. Robles and indicated to him that she was keeping her own separate tab because she was going to be leaving before the rest of that party left. And she did, in fact, order in the course of two and a half hours, and Mr. Robles was able to observe her specifically during the full two and a half hours that she was there. And she did order one margarita when she got there, and she kept that tab, which the chief had recognized in his presentation. And about an hour and a half after that, she ordered a second margarita. And that's the only thing that she would have drank that night. The receipts that you have in front of you that we gave you indicates that there's a specific kind of margarita that she had. It was a Patron margarita, and that's consistent with exactly everything that my clients told the officers when they came the next day and what the chief has indicated to you in his oral presentation this evening. It's interesting to note that clearly there is no history, no evidence at all, of that she had anything to drink before she came to our restaurant. In fact, just the opposite. She had told Mr. Robles when she first came in that she had just gotten off her shift at the Outback on a Thursday night, as usual, and was coming in for a drink or two with these other friends until her husband and the kids came home from the game. So, it's clear from looking at the receipts that she only had those two margaritas. They are different margaritas than the other three margaritas that are on the other receipt that went for the table of the four friends that she was with. The receipts show that there were three skinny margaritas and two Coronas. And Mr. Robles specifically remembers that there was one gentleman was drinking Corona beer, and then the other three people that were with this patron were drinking the so-called skinny margarita. So, she only had the two margaritas in the course of two and a half hours. Mr. Robles indicated specifically that he did observe her eating. They had chili con queso. They had guacamole nachos. So, it was nothing that would trigger any signs that this lady had any type of impairment whatsoever. Two margaritas over the course of two and a half hours from 8:00, 8:15, when she came off her eight o'clock shift at the Outback, until she left at about 10:30, according to Mr. Robles. She asked for her check and paid separately, and that was what she had. Ms. Maldonado, the manager, did observe her briefly when she first came in, said hi. She's a very, you know, well-known customer, as we indicated. Didn't observe anything unusual whatsoever about her behavior. It was two margaritas, as we said, over the course of two and a half hours, with no indication that she had ever had anything to drink before she came into our restaurant, specifically because she was waitressing and bartending at the Outback all day until 8 o'clock or 8:30, when she got off her shift and walked or drove down a couple of buildings over to our restaurant. So, the real question is, was my client negligent under the statute in serving someone who should have been known or was known to be intoxicated? And the concern we have, obviously, is that someone leaves and gets into some kind of an accident where they don't negotiate a turn, but we don't know why she did that. And obviously, the investigation might be ongoing, and we don't know what the final result will be of that prosecution. But all we do know is that there could be many, many reasons why today, you know, with cell phones, people are on cell phones all the time. She may have been talking to the kids and their father on the way home from the ballgame. We don't know. But we do know one thing, and that is that my client is trained, properly trained, to look for those signs of impairment, and there just wasn't any. She only had two drinks in the course of two and a half hours with no drinks before she came into the establishment. So, one's left to wonder, you know, how did she fail to negotiate this turn? And obviously, it looks serious because she ends up, obviously, in the, I guess there's a drainage ditch over on that turn on 114. Apparently, she couldn't negotiate the turn for whatever reason. But we're here to indicate to the board that although the police, obviously, are doing the right thing in bringing that matter forward for inquiry, it's very clear that, in our mind, that we did everything we could do, and if something happens to this lady leaving the restaurant, it wasn't due to the negligence of my client or the bartender that has been a very well experienced and no history of any problems whatsoever, bartender, in the past. We don't, like I said, we don't know what caused her to miss that turn, but we do know that if he didn't serve her that second margarita, she probably would have been complaining as to, why are you not serving me? I've only had one margarita an hour and a half ago. You know, what would be the problem? And when you know this lady from weeks and weeks and weeks for the last several years of coming in regularly to your establishment, and she doesn't show any different signs or behavior after that second margarita is served to her over the course of two and a half hours while she's enjoying herself with four other friends at the table, it just doesn't seem to meet the standard necessary to find a violation of the statute because, you know, we don't know, like I say, whether or not she may or may not have been. I don't know if there was any further police report that would indicate, you know, that there were signs to them at the scene that she was under the influence. We don't know. They find somebody in a car that obviously went off the road. Obviously, that's going to be the first thing they're going to look at, and they may very well have taken the precaution or measure to arrest her for that. But at this point, it seems to me we might be jumping the gun if we say she may go to trial, and she might be found not guilty of this charge. And if that's the case, would we want to look at punishing this particular establishment who has no track record of any problems before, obviously only opened for business a few months? But we don't know until we see that she was, in fact, under the influence to then go to them and say, why didn't you see the signs? You know, if this person was of a certain blood alcohol level, it should have been obvious to you, you missed it. And that's the concern. In a lot of cases, as you know, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, there's a good intention on the part of a server. He just doesn't pick up the signs that night. He misses something, whether it's not checking the ID properly on an underage or whether it's someone who should have been shut off. They just missed something, and unfortunately, that person goes out, and then there's an arrest for operating under influence. But you don't have that in this case. You don't have any sign of that when it's clear that this lady came over from the Outback after her shift with no drinking history for that evening, comes to our establishment, has two margaritas over the course of two and a half hours, seems to be fine when she's talking to my client, when she's leaving, pays her tab on her credit card. Everything seems to be the same way in mannerisms, demeanor, behavior that they see her in every week. So, that's our plea, is that we did everything we could do. Are we found to be negligent because this lady may very well have not had, you know, the faculties after leaving the bar to be able to negotiate that turn for whatever reason? But there just wasn't this evidence of reckless disregard for their responsibility as a serving establishment. And I would suggest to you that if you had any questions, you could ask both Mr. Robles, the server, as well as Ms. Maldonado, the manager. But that is, in fact, what happened in this particular case, and at this point, obviously, we don't know anything more about this lady's level of alcohol, other than what we can tell you is that she clearly only had two margaritas in our establishment and had just come from work, after working all day at the Outback, and hadn't had a drink before she got to us. So, that's our story. We're sticking to it.
Thank you. Just a couple of points. The ongoing court case is independent of our responsibility as a licensing body. And so, the disposition of that case, I'm glad that the chief brought it to us, even though that's an ongoing case and could take for whatever time it takes to reconcile. I consider them, we're not a criminal body. We're a licensing body, and this is the, and we're hearing this on the merits of what's presented to us in the police report and your statements, and we'll consider it as such. So, I'll start with the board members. Slakman Clark, do you have questions, sir?
I have a question of the chief.
Yes.
To refresh my memory, if it's appropriate to tell us tonight, what was her blood alcohol level when it was tested?
There was no breath test administered. She was offered a blood test, and that has not come back from the lab yet.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, chief. You know, that would, I think, spell a lot as to how impaired she might have been. I honestly don't think, I can't see how someone could be that impaired with two drinks over that length of time, quite honestly. So, that's all my comment.
Thank you. Slakman Mills?
I'm very sympathetic to this case, especially the cooperation that was shown by management to the Danvers police. And I'd like to know, again, I think that you said it, Counselor, what is the connection between this restaurant and Acapulco's in Beverly? And has Acapulco's been free of any liquor violation in its sixteen-year history?
The relation is that it's family-owned. So, they're basically, one owner of the Acapulco's in Beverly is Mr. Lepe, and his cousin, Mr. Brambilla, owns several of the other Acapulco's in the greater Boston area. So, this is simply a family spinoff, basically, you know, so that when the opportunity came to be able to open a Mexican family restaurant, and truly is a family restaurant as opposed to a lounge or a bar, that's when they bought this particular license in Danvers. It just goes by their Mexicali Grill because the different parts of the family, you know, would own this particular restaurant so that not every restaurant is an Acapulco's, and Mr. Lepe has a chance to establish his own trademark, so to speak, as the Mexicali Grill. But that's really the connection, is that it's just family-owned, and like I said to you earlier in the presentation, they've had, I think it's been sixteen, maybe it's going on seventeen years now, in the Coming Center in Beverly, and it's been a very good establishment by way of record. I don't know of any, I don't know of any history. I've been the attorney for these Brambillas and Lepe family since the beginning, when they bought one in Sudbury nineteen years ago, and I have not been a part of it.
And the two individual people, welcome, who are to your right, have they worked at the Acapulco's in Beverly?
Yes, that's what I mentioned at the very beginning, Counselor Mills, is that Mr. Robles was a server at the Beverly restaurant for six years, and she used to come to that restaurant regularly. That's how they knew her. Every week or so, she'd come in with her family. And then, when they opened up in Danvers, she was working at the Outback, which is only a couple of buildings away, so she would now frequent the Danvers location after either work on a night, she's working at the Outback, or she'd most likely come in with her family for dinner once a week.
Sure. Thank you.
That's the history.
Slakman Mills?
So, like you go through training for tips and recognizing impaired people, we had a liquor violation in here some time ago, and I asked the chief, how do the police know? And they, too, were trained. And the officer that wrote this report is a seasoned officer of higher rank and observed slurring and things that he has been trained to recognize somebody as being impaired. So, I have a police officer, or actually, a sergeant, or I can't remember now what Bosley is, whatever, has mentioned that in his training, the person who got out of that vehicle was impaired, as did, I believe, two other police officers. So, I have very trained people saying this person was impaired. I really don't have anything that tells me that person was there for two and a half hours. I don't see anything on the tab that says that. I do recognize that you are trained, that bartending is a difficult job, and you are trained to recognize these things, unlike it used to be in the past. But you're asking me to... I don't have anything that says that that person was there and had two drinks in two and a half hours. So, I'm kind of caught between two people that are supposed to be trained to recognize this.
The only thing I can add, Madam Slakman, is that we have clear, at least to me it is clear, but I suggest to you that it should be clear, evidence from the people that were there that served her that specifically says, I know about when she came in, I remember the group coming in, I know what time this person usually comes in when she comes off her shift and comes to our restaurant for a margarita and something to eat, and that was when it was. And that's all that we can talk about. I mean, it's not as if we have any other evidence from the police that indicate that she had been somewhere else before or that she'd only been at the Mexicali Grill for a half an hour, forty-five minutes. If she told them in a statement, I was just there for half an hour and I had two margaritas, that may cause concern. But if they asked, if anybody at the scene asked her where she drank before this incident, she told the Mexicali Grill. If they asked her how long she had been there, she would have, I would assume she would have told them, I was there since 8:30, because that's when Mr. Robles remembers her coming in. He remembers that she slowly sipped that first margarita, had chili con queso to eat, and had guacamole with nachos, and then she had a second one about an hour and fifteen minutes later. So, there's really no evidence to contradict that. If you look at the tab, you might be able to see when the tab was opened up, but I don't think you do. You see when it's closed, as you know. But you do have the manager, who was on duty and saw her when she came in, and you do have the server, who was the only one who served her, the only one who usually serves her, and he's clear and adamant that she came in about 8:15 and that she was there for about two, two and a quarter to two and a half hours. She had two margaritas during the course of that, and there's nothing to indicate that there's anything other than that. In fact, the tabs that you have in front of you clearly substantiate that. It shows that these four other people had completely different margaritas, had a different tab, and she paid for her two margaritas separately and left at 10:30, which is just shortly before this accident happened. I don't have any, I don't have privy to a police report that indicates that there's any indication of any slurred speech or anything like that, so I don't know where that reference would come from. All we have is a report that just says she was at the scene, and they arrested her for under the influence. Whether that ends up being something that's substantiated in the court of law, in criminal district court, is another story. We don't know what's going to happen. In fact, the chief was candid in saying that there was no blood alcohol level. So, there is no evidence that we have today that can say, look, the blood alcohol level was high enough where they should have seen the signs of impairment, and they didn't. But there is no blood alcohol level, so it seems to me, it makes it difficult. Now, no question that the officers are trained to be able to observe signs of impairment, you know, and obviously, it's a little different standard for the officer on the scene, seeing a woman, you know, off the road, and observes her. A little bit different standard than the bartender who served her just that second drink an hour, hour and fifteen minutes earlier. She sipped it slowly, according to him, and then she left for the night after closing her tab. Nothing unusual about that. But obviously, the officer comes on the scene, he sees what he's trained to see, and there's no question, you know, that he's got that ability to make those observations. The question is, could my client have been able to detect when he served the second margarita an hour and a half earlier that somehow she's having signs of impairment, which she definitely did not have, according to my clients, both the manager and the server? And that's really the evidence that you have. And no blood alcohol to suggest that there was the impairment level that this man should have picked up on. He only served her two margaritas over the course of two and a half hours. You know, if he didn't serve her the second one, like as I said, she'd be complaining, you know, what's the matter? Augustine, you know, I'm here every week. You know, what's the problem? It just didn't show any signs that would lead the board to determine that this particular establishment was negligent in not... establishment was negligent in not picking up the signs of a clearly impaired or intoxicated patron. It just wasn't there.
Thank you.
I have a question for the chief before I start my questions. Chief, to maintain the, not the right word, sanctity or to stay within the guardrails of the ongoing criminal court case, can I refer to statements made in the police report?
No.
Thank you. Okay.
Well, nobody has mentioned direct statements.
Okay.
From anything that I've heard, there were statements made, those weren't put out into the public, so we're fine.
So I can't refer to these?
No, you, the officer observations?
Yep.
That's fine.
Okay.
Direct statements made by other parties, no.
No, by that party?
By that party, yeah, no.
Okay, thank you. All right. So as not to quote that person, I have a question. First of all, I agree that on appearance, the neighboring table that had friends was not a factor to me in this case. I agree that this person appears to like a specific kind of drink, and that's what they drink, and I like a certain drink, and that's what I drink when I go out at night. On the receipt, it has a date stamp of 10/31. Is that when she closed her tab?
Yes.
That's when she closed her tab? And did she pay and then leave, did she pay and then leave, or pay at the delivery of the second drink and stay for a while? So she paid at 10:31 and left within a couple of minutes, give or take?
When she been, I'm doing my side work, cleaning everything.
Could you go to the microphone if you don't mind, sir?
When she want to pay, I'm cleaning everything, like doing my side work, and she say, I want to pay, I want to leave, and I'm getting the card, and they create card and she leave.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand, because sometimes I go out and when I know I've had my last drink, I'll pay but linger over the drink, and I'm just trying to get a timeline, that's all. But you also said that she ate food, and referred to food she ate. But we don't have anything, a tab that indicates the food sale either. Did she have a second tab or a second?
No, no, she, like, I just give it to her, the guacamole, because...
Oh, it was guacamole and chips, it was? I thought you said a case of the year.
I think they have, they order chili con queso.
Chili con queso and guacamole. It's a queso dip.
It's a dip, chili con queso.
Okay, but isn't something you charge for?
There was nothing they charged for on the bill, no.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
It's not in her bill, it's in the other bill.
I just wanted to make sure, you mentioned food, and I didn't see food on her bill, so I want to...
No, her bill, there wasn't, there wasn't.
Okay.
The food was brought to the table, where the four friends were.
Oh, where the queso was at next table.
And you can see that on their bill.
So, as Slakman Langlos say, we have highly trained and professional police force that deal with a lot of this. As, and I understand in your service record and your years of service, you're trained also to see when someone's impaired. And I believe that you would stop someone from drinking if they were impaired, or if they were, even if they drank that second drink and that made them impaired, you would deal with that. I've got no concerns that that would be the case, but I do also have trained professionals who deal with a lot of this. And without alluding to exact statements made, indications that this person was, felt that they were over-served, oh, no, let me rephrase that, felt that they were impaired, they felt they were impaired, and reflected that to the statements. If I get too close, chief, just wave your hand. And that, and that they had come from your establishment. We don't know what happened before, you made statements about the fact that she was working, going off her shift, and hadn't drank before that, we don't know that, you don't know that, it's projection. I'm just also looking, one of the questions I have, honestly, is she closed out her bill at 10:30, the accident happened at 11:30. It's not an hour between your establishment and that accident scene, we can't tell. So there's enough, I completely embrace the fact that the chief was responsible in bringing it to us, the licensing board, to say, here's some dots. This is a dot, an accident happened, this is a dot, statements were made, this is a dot, the references that the, it was Mexicali, your restaurant, that that person was served and left. And then we have to see to the licensing board level how those dots connect. So I fully embrace and accept the police report we have that you don't have access to at this time, and is an ongoing case, that I wouldn't want to jeopardize in any manner. I think it was absolutely sufficient to bring, to ask you to come to us, and I think that, given all the facts that we've heard, I don't think the lack of a blood alcohol level test is an indicator of not being impaired. We know that even, we've heard recently in other issues, that that's no longer admissible in court anyhow, it's, you know, field sobriety tests vary, and I trust fully that the officers who reacted or responded to this accident had reasonable cause to feel that person was impaired. And so now we have to just decide as a board, does it rise to a level of some reaction? So this is a, do you want to say anything before I open it up to the public?
I think we've said as much as we need to say.
Okay, I just want to give you an opportunity.
I appreciate what you say, and I agree with you, Mr. Chairman, no question that there is, we agree that she left our establishment, and there was no intervening place that she went to, we all understand that. But we're trying to give you the circumstances so that you can take it in the full context of what was actually happening, and I think the police did a fine job to do what they had to do, and clearly, we think that we acted reasonably in serving what we did.
Great. This is a public hearing, is there any member of the public who wishes to speak to this issue? Seeing none, I'll ask to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion made to close the public hearing?
Seconded.
And seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. I'll turn to the board for their thoughts and considerations. Is there any other member of the board who has a thought on this issue? I'm hearing none.
Good. May I ask, would the chief like to be heard further?
No, nothing, I understand this is one of those cases where it's not clear-cut as far as there weren't 15 drinks served. My only thing is, there was an accident that occurred after this individual was served. The officer determined that the person was intoxicated, and formulated the opinion that that person has been intoxicated, has been brought to court for the charges. The folks here have been very, very cooperative. They serve us the two drinks normally, that wouldn't raise any red flags, so I understand that the board has got a little dilemma. Just in fairness to the board and to the folks here tonight.
Thank you, chief.
I am reluctant to conclude, because somebody was driving under the influence, and I believe that this person was, because I trust our police officers, that does not necessarily prove that one was served while impaired. I just, in this particular case, I wouldn't conclude that, so that's all I wanted to say.
Is there anyone who wants to offer, this is before us as an agenda item, and is there anybody who wants to offer any motion on this regard? Action, no action?
I just think the reaction of the company was appropriate and honest. I have a feeling that she could very easily have been served a second drink and not impaired in any way, shape, or form, and if she became impaired, it might have been well drinking a second drink, but I just can't see a person over a length of time like that having such an impediment because of just two drinks, unless the margaritas are really strong. Even then, I just couldn't, and I can't bring myself to initiate any action at this point.
Good, could I?
Yes, Mr. Mills, please.
I'm wondering if there's some way we could postpone action on this for a period of, you know, six months, or kind of like probation, like a first offense probation, rather than finding them in violation of the license?
We have the latitude to do whatever we want. We can say no action, we can say that we have concern and impose no penalties, we could impose penalties, it's entirely up to us, we have that latitude as the licensing board. So if someone wants to offer, my personal feeling is, this should conclude this evening with whatever direction we want to take. I would not want to, meaning, I don't want any reliance on this other court case, I don't want reliance on returned blood alcohol levels, I'm not sure that my, I would be swayed dramatically from the presentation by both sides today, in a dramatic manner from what I might decide tonight, but that's my personal feeling, so...
Then I move no action.
I'll second it.
There's a motion made and seconded of no action on the public hearing. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Well, I'll support that, but I'm having, I want you to know, I'm having a very hard time supporting that, in that we did read the report, and not really sure of a shift ending at 8 o'clock at Outback, I have nothing that proves that. I have nothing that proves that they were there two and a half hours, I also have nothing that proves that there was an alcohol level. So that's the reason I'm supporting this. But I'm not doing it excitedly, and I think that would appreciate if you would go back and dot your i's, cross your t's, and that hopefully we never see you back here again. But something happened that night, we read it. Something definitely happened that night, so please, you know, take this as a warning and just go over your procedures.
I too have a, I too will go with the will of the board of no action, however, I will say that hopefully this was an aberration, hopefully this was something that we hope you do not have another issue before us. I would consider, if I was a board member at that time, I would consider this with, another action in the near future was slightly more prejudiced than I would if it was your first time before us. But at this time, I can't see issuing a day of suspension or more and holding it to abeyance as we have with others, but I do think that there is sufficient weight to the police report to say there's smoke here, so I'll support that as well. Any more discussion on the motion of no action?
I just don't want the chief to feel offended by this, but this is the first time that I've really come in any way near soft on any kind of the allegations that have been brought by the police department, who I have the greatest respect for.
I understand that, I appreciate the comment, I'm in full agreement with the board.
Thank you, thank you, chief. I'm usually the toughest guy on the board on these things, so, all right, I will, if there's no more discussion on the motion, all in favor of the motion of no action, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, we appreciate you joining us, it is a serious issue that we face with all liquor license holders, and we hope you feel that, you know, we hold all of the liquor license holders to the same standard, and in the same instance, we would bring any other establishment in, so please don't feel this is in any manner prejudiced against your company.
We know that we should be here, you're doing your job.
Thank you.
And that we take it seriously.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate that.
Good luck. Good luck, and we hope to see you only on positive business in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief. All right. Town manager report on various items of interest.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll conclude the town manager update with a brief report from Kathy Ellsworth on the upcoming election, but I'll share a few items first. On March 22nd, I attended a legislative breakfast up in Andover that was hosted by the MMA, and I had an opportunity after that breakfast to sit with some of the policy staff from MMA and have a pretty in-depth discussion about our upcoming water withdrawal permit. The MMA was quite interested to learn about some of the issues that we face as a permit holder from the DEP, some of the pressures that we have faced historically from groups interested in being party to those permits being issued by the DEP. We will likely invite in the delegation representing all of the communities on the North Shore within the watershed along with the MMA, because they've expressed an interest to express our concern and position. Our understanding is that the Ipswich River Watershed Association hosted their own legislative breakfast earlier this spring, and we think it's critical that the water suppliers sit down with the delegation to explain that, I think, despite some of the narrative or perception that the water suppliers have as great, if not more, of an incentive to ensure the sustainability of these water resources than other river associations do, because we have a civic and moral obligation to provide drinking water to our community. So the good news there, it'll be, it's going to be a difficult process working through this permit renewal, it was a difficult process the last time I wasn't here for that, but it was a litigious process. The initial feedback from the DEP is that it's going to be an equally difficult process this time, so we're gearing up, Stephen King, David Lane, Murphy Hesse and myself, to sort of start that process in the next couple of months, and it will likely be lengthy, so I imagine we'll be talking about this for the better part of the next year. Also on the topic of water, I'm pleased to report that we have a signed access agreement with the Rebecca Nurse Homestead with the Danvers Alarm List, so we'll be able to do some initial testing on that site with their permission. They're certainly interested in seeing what we find there as well. The testing will probably occur over a full year, because we'll need to do testing in a number of different seasons to determine the volume and quality of the water that's there. There's, if I were betting, probably less than even odds that we'll ultimately be pulling water from a municipal well there, but there's enough evidence at this point to support the exploration. In fact, we'll have a modest request at town meeting to fund this process. So, and perfect segue, the budget that the board approved on March 9th is, you received your hard copies tonight, we've received the first run of those copies, they're still coming in, but the PDF of the full budget is now on the website. So for those town meeting members who would have liked to have been reading that budget two weeks ago, they can go on the website, start to look at it online, the hard copy should be in the mail this week. We're hoping that they're in town meeting members' hands prior to the first finance committee meeting, which starts next Monday, but for now, it is an available document on the town website. The town, the annual town meeting warrant for our 2019 May town meeting closes this Friday at noon, so we expect to have a draft of the warrant out to the board probably early next week, and we'll also get that online in a timely fashion so that folks can start to see what will be recommended to the board and then to the finance committee in that process. I had mentioned previously, we're, you know, we're looking ahead a year, we've had a couple of difficult years with our health renewals, we're not unique in that, the cost of healthcare only seems to go up. We have been meeting, we've been convening the IAC, which is the Insurance Advisory Committee, that's a body in town with membership from all of the unions, including the school union, management, a health consultant, and historically, the town has been very successful in making, agreeing on and implementing changes through that body that have been effective in terms of balancing the need to constrain or try to bend the trend on healthcare costs with the need to provide a comprehensive and competitive benefits package to employees. So we're anticipating, we have a, we have, the plan is set for the coming fiscal year, so the budget that you approved, we were able to renew the existing health plan, but we are looking ahead to July 1st, 2020, recognizing that, you know, the marketplace still offers some pretty significant headwinds. And in that regard, or in anticipation of that, we held three sessions last week and yesterday, two at the high school, one at the middle school for staff from the town and the schools, very well attended, we had 200 subscribers on our, it's about 30% of our total subscribers on the health plan come. It was a pretty high-level overview of the plan that we currently offer, and I think that kind of the menu of options looking forward. And I, my takeaway is that staff is open to and understands and is earnest about the issues we're facing and is... and understands and is earnest about the issues we're facing and is is, um, ready to look at uh, ways that we can try to control that and and ensure some budget sustainability moving forward. So, um, it's a big undertaking. You know, our our goal would be that by the end of this fiscal year, we have a game plan looking ahead a year, because, uh, anything that we do has a has a long lead time and it can be very disruptive. So we want to make sure that we, uh, start that process as early as possible, looking ahead to fiscal year two thousand twenty-one. And a quick note, uh, Bill Brass Street mentioned at the beginning of the night, feels like days ago now, but, uh, just a couple hours ago, the the monument out front. Um, there had been proposals over the last couple of years. I know our forestry and grounds division um, also has some concerns with the, uh, the amount of growth that has occurred on the shrubs around, um, uh, the the obelisk. I know there was a proposal at one point to simply remove them and put in some garden beds with some flowers at the base of that monument to allow people to really see, uh, the full monument. Um, I don't know that with with field prep and everything else going on this spring, that they'd be able to get in and do that project ahead of Memorial Day. But certainly, uh, it can be cleaned up, um, ahead of Memorial Day. And then I think we can have a conversation about whether it's time to pull those, uh, and put something, uh, a little more attractive in their place. But that was not on my list, but I thought I would add it, uh, in recognition of our diligent town meeting members who've stuck with us tonight. And with that, um, unless there are any questions, uh, on any of the items I just presented on, uh, welcome Kathy's report on the upcoming election.
Okay, we've sent off the, um, ballot over to the printer to have a draft created. Um, we've got full, um, town meeting seats, um, in everything except precinct two. I'm short two, um, candidates for that, of which one I've got an interest for a write-in. Precinct seven.
What precinct is that, Kathy?
Precinct two.
It's my precinct. Okay, just wondering.
I had one gentleman come in, uh, and express an interest for write-in. Um, so if anybody else is looking for write-in, uh, if they could let us know, then we'll know, um, to have the wardens look for those on Election Day. Um, and then I'm short one in precinct seven as well.
Could I ask a question just so, in case the public wonders? If, um, someone decides that they want to be a write-in candidate, if what is the rule? Do you have to use that person's legal name, you know, that that they've registered with? For example, if it was me.
Right.
And someone wrote Goddard Trask, it's supposed to be Goddard Trask the third, how what's, how does that happen?
Well, preferably, we'd like it to be as registered to vote.
Okay.
However, if you came to me and said, um, Goddard, I'm gonna run for, um, town meeting member. If we know that we're looking for it, and if we can determine that that was the voter's intent, then we would count that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So we're really all set with that. And then the election equipment, um, is coming in on Thursday. So we'll have the new equipment, um, coming into this room, and they'll do some, um, quality testing with that. And then they'll take all of the old equipment that same day. And then we've got the training set for the wardens, um, and the assistant wardens on April seventeenth from two to four, or on April eighteenth from six to eight. So if any of you would like to join that, feel free.
And when can people request mail-in ballots?
Oh.
Oh, I didn't mean to trick you. Yeah, we can wait till, I realize it's a while, I realize it's a ways away, but I just thought maybe if we could understa-
We're taking applications now for absentee ballots.
Okay.
As soon as the ballots come in, then we get them out right away. So it's really not a set date for that.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any questions for the clerk? Thank you. Uh, before we move to the consent calendar, I am going to abstain. One of the items is specific to me. Uh, if members have a question they want to ask me about that, I'm happy to talk about it. Uh, but I will abstain from the, uh, vote on the consent calendar as it relates to, uh, block potty I host. So, I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion. We accept the consent calendar as presented.
Motion made.
Second.
Any questions or discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Will not stay. Thank you. All right. Now, the correspondence, selectmen new business, previous new business, closing comments, the whole shebang. I'll start with Bill and I'll, uh, take up Dan's mantle at the end.
Thanks, Goddard. Uh, I'd like to, um, relate a concern that a constituent of mine, neighbor of mine, has brought to me on a couple of occasions. And most recently, about two weeks ago, and I have been watching it anecdotally since then. This res, this person's been a resident of Briarwood Drive for over fifty years, about the time that ninety-seven, ninety-five was built. They created Briarwood Drive. Many of the houses were moved from Dayton Street, Center Street, one fourteen, to that street. And it's a quiet residential street off Center Street, just before you get to ninety-five. In the last couple of years, they've had problems with people parking on Briarwood Drive rather extensively and blocking the view onto onto Center Street when they come out. And they're, they're all coming from the arc across the street. Arc, I I guess attempted to solve that problem by buying more land over there, creating more parking lots. But they still occasionally have parking that go down Briarwood Drive all the way to Highland Terrace. Uh, I counted seventeen cars on it the other day, and they were there for most of the day. I think it's a legitimate complaint this neighbor has, and he wanted to know what we could do about it. And I told, I suggested he go to the, um, traffic advisory committee, and if they have a problem, they might be able to, um, initiate some sort of, uh, parking ban or suggested parking ban on that street, because it's 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 kind of impactful to the residents on that street, that people are parking in front of their houses in a residential neighborhood for a long, extended periods of time. And I think Arc is way, way overextended where they are, as far as the number of participants in their program at that location, to the point where they're using the entire South Side Dry Road and their own parking lot and other available areas, and they still don't have enough parking. The other comment is just simply an anecdotal comment that was made to me by a couple of town employees who went to the health, um, presentations last couple of days, and they were, they were all upset about the potential for a five thousand dollar deductible. And I said that, that we haven't voted that yet. That's something that's been maybe considered, but, uh, they're really, really upset about it. Uh, 'cause I guess it's ten thousand dollar potentially, uh, for a couple. And that that's a pretty substantial amount for a major operation to have on your, plus your insurance payments. Just a, just a concern to come back from.
Yeah, I would just, just to note, I mean, I I I probably didn't do a good, good enough job being clear then. Um, we we made, I I attempted to make very clear, we're we're nowhere near any decisions on anything. Uh, we did present, um, a high deductible plan, along with six or seven other different options that are available to us, uh, mainly to show the the difference in the way that premiums and deductibles interact with each other. Um, so we're, we're a long ways off from any decisions, and ultimately, it requires votes of the unions to move forward, something like that. So, this was an education session. We wanted people to, it's a very, what you just described would be the most different concept, uh, to this organization. So, um, there's a lot of education, uh, and discussion that we need to, that we need to work through.
Thank you. That's it. Thank you. Selectman Mills?
Um, I should maybe have, um, just mentioned this to Steve during the week. I received a comment on the, uh, apparent lack of maintenance of the Rotary Pavilion down on the Mill Pond. And as, as I recall, that was a Rotary project and a gift to the town from, uh, from Rotary. And I don't think Rotary's as big as it used to be. Um, and, uh, I, so I went down there, and I looked, and, uh, I don't get out of the car too much these days, but I'm looking at the corner of the roof portion of it, I can see from my car. And it is in real disrepair. It's as though the water has, like, really kind of brushed that. And so my, one of my thoughts is, I go up to the Aggie for lunch every now and then. The Aggie's a phenomenal place, and I'm wondering if the, I think there's a carpentry program at the Aggie, and I just wonder if we could, and by the way, we spend twenty thousand bucks per student up there to educate those kids. That is getting to be like Phillips Exeter, you know, um, or Boston Latin School. You have to take an exam to get in there, I think. But I'm just wondering, we we should do something for that, uh, pavilion building. And, um, the, maybe it's the loud music in the summertime that really kind of rattles the, uh, the roof. Now, I don't know, but if we could.
It's the desonance of, uh, someone singing.
I don't think that the Rotary Club can afford to, uh, I don't think the Rotary Club is big enough to really put any more dough into that. And so, I don't want to spend any more of your dough, ladies and gentlemen. So I'm just wondering if we could get some more advantage out of our dough that goes into the Essex Aggie, see if we can get some wonderful kids have a great project there.
So we, the tech's a great idea for that project. You'll be hearing a lot in the next week or two about all of the projects we should be doing but can't, based on, uh, available resources at 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 town meeting this year. So there's, we we have a lot of deferred maintenance that we should be doing. Um, but I I agree with you that we have a great resource in the tech. Um, that 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 is, that would be a a good candidate project for them, uh, because there wouldn't necessarily be a hard deadline, as there would with a school project, or, for example, you know, um, some of the other types of projects that we have to do year in and year out. So, um, I was in contact with the superintendent earlier this week on a different subject, so I think we'll circle back and and discuss that. I like that a lot.
Thank you, Steve.
Maybe the beavers have moved over there to, or the coyotes, one or the other are over there.
The Canadian geese are definitely over there.
It's the Canadian geese.
And then there's that music in the, I don't know how how connected that music program is to the.
My voice won a shattered glass of old red wood, so.
I'm upset, thank you.
All right. I have a couple of things. Um, one is, I refer to the, uh, Finance Committee Budget Hearing Meeting Schedule. Um, I know Bill said he needed to switch off his date on the eleventh. I'm scheduled for Monday the eighth. Are you in town then or not?
I'll be around on the eighth.
Do you want to swap with me?
If you could take the eleventh?
I'll take the eleventh.
Yeah, 'cause I can't be around.
All right. So currently, the schedule is on Monday, April eighth. Bill will take that. David will be representing us on April tenth. I'll be representing, um, on April eleventh. Diane is April twenty-third, and Thursday, April twenty-fifth is Dan. And if necessary, on Saturday, the twenty-seventh, I'll take that again. Um, I have to be away on personal family. I have to conduct some family business, uh, away, um, at the week of our next meeting. So I've asked Diane to to chair for us. Unfortunately, um, I have to go to Florida and conduct some family business. Um, so I'll be away that entire week, the thirteenth through the twentieth. Um, uh, I do know, and I apologize, I do know we have a normal selectmen's meeting, and then the following night is the warrant article, remainder warrant articles. Um, this is something that was unavoidable. Um, other than that, I don't think I have any other business. I'll, I'll, uh, uh, take up Dan's mantle to remind you that, um, veterans need our support every day, uh, as well as active service people. I do know that, um, May fifth is an upcoming, uh, um, event in Middleton at the VFW. Um, it's a, a Blues for the Troops, I can't remember what number it is, might be five or six. Um, a big fundraiser, uh, Dave's Worth of Music, um, uh, and raffles, uh, to support Operation Troop Support. And encourage people to go to that if, uh, at all possible. And, um, just to remember that, um, uh, it's not just Memorial Day, it's not just Veterans Day, that we need to remember the sacrifices and of of those who served and of those who continue to serve, um, and protect our freedoms. So please make sure you, if you see a vet, thank a vet. Uh, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much, Travis. Stay safe.